Okay, let's call the meeting to order. It is, I welcome everybody to the October 13th edition of the Hermiston City Council and Urban Renewal Agency. As a reminder, I'd like to make sure, since we have a few people in the audience tonight, remind you to put your phones on silent if you haven't done so already, and remove hats. At this time, we have a quorum, all members present, and would everybody please rise for the flag slip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes to the agenda today?
No changes.
No changes. Okay, unfortunately, we have to start off on a sad note, as many people in the audience and up on the dais may know, our previous city manager, Mr. Brook, Ed Brookshire, recently passed, and as such, we have a proclamation that we would like, that I would like to read at this time. Whereas Ed, James Ed Brookshire came to Hermiston to serve as city manager in 1991, and whereas Ed tirelessly served the city of Hermiston for more than two decades, from 1991 to 2014, and whereas Ed's efforts to fuel the regional economy through infrastructure development and business attraction resulted in regional investments totaling more than $6 billion, and whereas Ed's efforts in developing the regional water system in conjunction with the Port of Umatilla continues to spur development in the greater Hermiston area, and whereas Ed's efforts in attracting companies like Walmart Distribution Center, Cortiva Agri-science, and other employers have provided thousands of jobs to workers in the region, and whereas Ed's efforts to move the Umatilla County Fairgrounds out of the downtown area and create the Eastern Oregon Trade and Event Center, EOTC, as a regional, regional community asset, whereas Ed's efforts to develop the Hermiston Family Aquatic Center and create the Hermiston Parks and Recreation Department show his ability to take the community's vision and turn it into a positive impact on thousands through swimming lessons and other recreational opportunities, and whereas Ed's efforts in bringing into existence the Eastern Oregon Higher Education Center have led to higher educational opportunities that improve economic opportunities for Hermiston residents, and whereas Ed's efforts in creating Hermiston Energy Services as the first municipal electric utility created in decades that provides affordable electric rates to Hermistonians, and whereas Hermiston lost a great community advocate and supporters when Ed passed away on October 4th, 2025. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Doug Primmer, do hereby proclaim that the city of Hermiston recognizes and expresses heartfelt thanks for the extraordinary commitment made by Mr. Ed Brookshire to the city of Hermiston and its residents. Signs this 13th day of October, 2025. I'm gonna sign that right now. Having worked with, with Mr. Brookshire, like most people that I have to work with, we all didn't see eye to eye on several things, however, I agree with everything that was on this, this proclamation, he did work tirelessly to bring a better Hermiston, and he will be missed. Does anybody have any else? Jackie?
Always devoted, 100% of his day and every day that he worked for the city. His sense of community was unbelievable, he only wanted what was best for the city. And he would work just until, he researched everything until he had it down to where it could be presented, he presented it, and it was all, well, as you can see, he really made an impact on Hermiston.
Thank you. Any others? Maria?
I am very thankful to Mr. Ed Brookshire. When I worked for the Inner Mountain ESD in the old city hall, he actually invited me in with the former superintendent, Jer Pratton, and he wanted to have a vision for the, you know, long haul, and he wanted to have more Hispanic involvement, and he wanted me to be part of the Hermiston Futures Task Force, and this was made up of other community members where, you know, we would be looking at the growth in the coming years. So, for him to call me to a meeting, I, I was really nervous at first, you know, there were many other community members, and I felt like, why would he want me to be part of it? But for someone as important, that I thought, as the city manager, I thought about it, and I said, you know, thank you for inviting me, and of course, I'll be part of it. So, from the very beginning, my impression of him was that he was a visionary, he was a hard worker, and that he was very proud of Hermiston, so I appreciate him bringing me on board back then, and, you know, many years later, here I am. I didn't know that, that was gonna be the beginning of my involvement with the city, that wasn't, this was not part of the plan, but I think those were the baby steps that were taken in, that was thanks to him.
Any others? Moving on, next on our proclamations and presentations, we have a presentation by Mr. Bacon, I saw you back there in the back, sir, from the Hermiston School District. Welcome, sir.
Well, thanks for having me back.
Absolutely.
Well, school is rolling right along, and we're actually planning events and activities that are taking place in December, so it's kind of a, it's a, it's an interesting feeling how quickly the school shows up, and then, man, we are right smack dab in the middle of it. I'll start off tonight talking about one of the, one of our favorite events that take place, just last week, our students that are in our, oh, Action and Path, or Pathway students that are learning to become teachers, that's their goal, was able to participate in a, in our core, enhanced core reading instruction training that takes place, so this is a training that all of our teachers and assistants at the elementary level are able to participate in, and we do that yearly, and this is now our second year that we've been able to have our students in that pathway program also attend the training that's specific for them, to help them learn about how to deliver that reading instruction, and so it's a full day, bring in lunch, the kids learn, and then they're able to take those skills that they're learning, and we have a program called the High Dosage Tutoring that's taking place, that we're getting ready to kick off, and they're able to apply those at the elementary buildings. So, that's one of our most exciting ones that we have going on right now, that's fun to watch the kids and their, their excitement as they jump into it. Homecoming Week just concluded also, and everyone survived, I think adults included. So, during that time, there, throughout the events, over 500 students were estimated to be participating in each of the evening activities, events, I was able to attend majority of those, and the kids and their enthusiasm was, it was fun to watch. We're still continuing with our parent guidance webinars, we have October 9th coming up, well, actually, that one occurred, October 16th, so on the 9th, we were able to learn about strategies for emotional regulation, parents were able to log in and participate there, and on the 16th, where they'll be covering practical ways to cultivate everyday happiness, and so, again, if you are or know somebody who's interested in participating in it, please have them check out our district website, there's a link on there to how to register and get signed up. Important dates we have coming up, the Portland Opera is back in town again, and they are actually performing tonight at the high school, and then, we have our FFA alumni and supporters' banquet, it's happening on Saturday, October 18th, followed by October 31st is a transition day for teachers, where they'll be preparing for grading, getting things ready for conferences that will be happening on November 3rd through the 7th. Now, this year, the schedule looks a little bit different than what is our traditional conference schedule, and we are all creatures of habit, so when you throw that little wrench in there, we're really trying to make sure and communicate it out there. The secondary conferences are gonna be held on Monday and Wednesday, which is our normal schedule for that time during the year, but it'll be from 4 to 8, and then, the elementary are gonna be Tuesday evening and Thursday evening, and what's different this year is that students will have school on Friday, or, for the secondary, and teachers will have, for the elementary level, will be providing conferences all day long during that day. And why is this different, and what's unique about it? The way Veterans Day falls on the 11th, which is a Tuesday, so we use the trade day, which is part of the working agreement, so we combine those with Monday and the 11th, just so that way, there's an additional time there, a block of time, so it's not so pieced-mealed And then, the daylight is slowly going away from us, so just a quick reminder, as that vanishes, that kids are gonna be walking to school and walking home, and so, just as we talk amongst the community and around family and friends, just reminders that visibility becomes hard to see kids when they're walking to and from school, and then, I'm not sure when I'll be back, but, please pay attention to the district website if any weather delays start to jump out there a little bit here in the upcoming months. We also are excited, and just wanna say thankful, we're thankful for the partnership that we have with Umatilla County as we approach our one-year anniversary with having the health clinic in the high school, it's been a wonderful partnership, and our families are using that resource, so those are the highlights that we have going on in the district right now. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Seeing none, looks like you got off easy tonight.
All right.
Okay.
All right, sir.
Appreciate you bringing this to us, we look, glad to hear that that health clinic deal is, is working out well, that's, that's exciting.
Yeah.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks, sir.
All right, next up, we have a presentation from Walk With Purpose by Shelley Hankinson, I believe she handed out some flyers for everybody to take a look at, Shelley, would you mind coming up? Or those with you? Yeah, that's fine. But one of you needs to give us your name and all that good stuff.
Well, I do talk, but never mind, I'll, I'll write there. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Mike say it, or Dina.
Hi, I'm Dina Gilland, I'm one of five owner managers of Walk With Purpose Transitional Homes. What we are, we have two homes in the Hermiston area, we have a men's transitional home, and we house, we can house up to 10, 11, if it's an emergency, men who are trying to navigate recovery from addiction. We get a lot of referrals out of our prison system, our treatment centers across the state and into other states, actually, so, and then, we also have a women's house, and we can house up to eight women there. So, we're here, we're just gonna tell you a little bit about your, about ourselves, I think we handed out some brochures. So, I, I am in recovery, my sobriety date is March 1st, 2005, and I do this, I do this because I, I believe that people need to be seen as addicts and alcoholics, and it's really difficult to manage that transition from that life into recovery and what that looks like. And my job, basically, we all have these different jobs, my job is I keep the books, I keep the books, and communicate with different agencies, we partner with many agencies in our community, and, yeah, I think that's it for me. So, I'm gonna let Mike, this is Michael Gilland, and he's gonna donate.
Hey, guys. I, my job in Walk With Purpose is, I'm kind of their brother in recovery, I'm on the ground floor, I go to a lot of meetings with them, I'm right there for the good and the bad, a lot of them confide in me. My sobriety date is 4/4/2022, I also have experience of being in prison and drinking a lot and doing a lot of drugs, so I have that experience, which is what got us here anyway. What's amazing about the house is that my family, we meet every Sunday to do business, and then we do a house meeting with the clients, we take the time, and I think that's the big part of it, we're all about accountability, you know, we don't let people slide with stuff, I mean, you pay your rent, you don't do drugs, you don't do this, you follow every law, we check in with probation and parole and probation, we talk to their counselors at CCS, we check with UAs, we're truly about pushing them to be better people, for sure, and give them a chance.
I'm Sandy Wise, and I, my little position in the group is I help keep our, all our information on SharePoint, I help keep our SharePoint up to date, I also help with collection of rent, and I'm doing this because, couple of reasons, it's a family thing, but I've also lost two sons to drugs and alcohol, and so, it's important to me that we help our guys and our gals choose the right direction, have someplace to go, teach them all the steps to live in a clean and sober world, because a lot of them started very, very young, and they don't even know how to be adults out in our world right now, so part of our job is, part of what we do is help them take those steps towards living in recovery and out amongst all the rest of us.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Gilliland, and I'm mommed to this bunch. I'm, it's pretty obvious why I'm involved, it was, people were dying out there on the streets, and I, I almost lost my son to drugs, so that's why I'm here.
So, I'll finish off, most people know me as the garden lady, I manage the community garden, I also work with a lot of community service people, we rely on the community service from DOC and municipal court to help us to maintain that garden, so, there are 80 plots there, and it's full of weeds right now. So, I'm, that's part of what I, how I got involved with this, I work, I see, saw, see Doug on a regular basis out in the community, and, and he asked, he asked us to come and speak, and I thought that would be a great idea. My role in, in Walk With Purpose is to help Mike keep on track, I'm kind of his secretary, and then, I, I take in the rent, and I'm kind of the softie out of the group, so, these guys are all hardcore. There you go.
Oh, we wanna ask you if you, oh, go ahead. Yeah, no, I was just, just to mention, we do have a couple of our men here from the house to support us, which I thought was really neat that they came out to support us here today. So, if you have any questions for us, we're here to answer anything you might have.
Counsel Litten?
Sounds like you guys are doing an awesome job, thank you so much, 'cause it is needed here, and not just here, but across the country, so thank you, but my question is, how do people find you? Do you go out and talk to people on the street, or, or do you have people, other agency refer them to you?
Well, I think what's amazing about us, we've been here since 1976, and, and I knew everybody that were dirtbags, and these guys know everybody that's not, in a sense, so the word's out right now, so, we are involved with CCS a lot, parole and probation, we have a great relationship with right now, we're now just getting started in, where the release counselors at the prisons are starting to know us at Powder River, at Coffee Creek, at Two Rivers, so we're getting referrals there. I literally probably turned down two people a week telling them that we're full of men, at least, the women, now we're starting to get, we're getting flooded with stuff right now, we could possibly probably fill another men's house in a week, easily.
If we had one.
Yeah. So, we're, we're actually hopefully working in cooperation with CCS to maybe start doing some of that kind of stuff, so, if, when you look up recovery houses, now you have this, this QR code has applications on the back of it, it's very simple to get them, and you get it to us, it's a very simple process to go through, and that's about it, I mean, if you ask Copes, any of the drug and alcohol entities, they powerhouse, any of them, they know about us now.
Counsel Meyer?
We have one on East Highland, and we have one on West Division.
Question for you, say if there's like a business or somebody that wants to help support you guys or something, how would they get ahold of you guys, or what website could they go to?
We don't have a website, but if, we have a card, but all our numbers are on the back, right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Drew?
What an honorable thing that you're doing for our community, and I didn't even know about it, so, how long have you guys been doing this for?
We've had the houses since 2019.
2019. And if there are people that want to support the housing, do you accept donations? What are the needs that your, the housing has?
Yeah, you know, like, the day-to-day in the house, I mean, it's hard to volunteer and help within there, but there is some situations that just would have to be talked about and how that would work out, sometimes clothes, sometimes food, sometimes money, just depends, we have been talking about doing a thing where, 'cause we require like $150 to walk in the door, we, we feel as this is an accountability thing for people to do, but we've talked about doing scholarships for people that are coming out of prison, which is a little more difficult, or out of county jail, or treatment.
Yeah, many of these, many of the people that come in are maybe estranged from their family, or haven't been connected to services yet, we try really hard, first phone call usually during an interview, we ask if they're, excuse me, engaged in any services, or have been in contact with, for example, CCS, or, or LAPS, or, or Copes, or different, different, different community, yeah, growing hope, and if they're not, we help to link them to those services, to help with some of those things, so.
Some personal items, when they first walk in the door, some of them don't have shoes or socks, some of them don't have bedding, or toiletries, so we provide a small gift bag, but again, that, that cuts into what we're, we're putting out already, we do get donations here and there, and just anything that you can think of that would be in a house that, you know, some, some stuff walks off, you know, pillows walk off, because, you know, they're pillow, blankets and, and things that are really necessity, especially if they're moving out on their own, it, you know, we try to give them a good start to get out, out on their own, but once they get there, they're like, oh, I've got this to buy, and I've got this to buy, and, so we kinda give them a little go-away package too.
Yeah. One thing that's, that I found is amazing about things, so there's an Oxford house here in town, and I'm not gonna knock Oxford, but it's, it's self-run, so in the last nine months, we've had to ask two people to leave, one person for drug, for relapsing, was it? Yeah, and one person, he shoplifted at Walmart, it was ridiculous, actually, and, and Oxford, their turnaround, they had, I think the last count was 12 or 13 people that had been asked to leave for relapsing, right? And I really feel as if it's because of what our experience and stuff like that, and the accountability in the time that we give, for sure, and the community's support, for sure.
Any others? Counsel Brian?
It's great to see you, Dina. I, I worked at one point in Drug and Alcohol Counseling for Drug Court, and I got to meet Dina there, and not only, as they mentioned before, they have personal experience, but they also have professional expertise, and so, I really appreciate seeing you continuing to help in this role, and you guys have a lot of partnerships, I guess the only thing that I would say is, I would, as, I think, as a city, I think, you know, that we've been trying to do things for homelessness through stepping stones, and so, I think, and I'm not gonna speak for all the council, but we would certainly, I would certainly like to support, and however we can, I know partner agencies is, is the first start, but with transitional homes and helping people get back on their feet, I think that's what this community is all about, trying to get people back on their feet and, and connected, and, well, we want people to have a sweet life here, kinda like our...
If anyone has a house that they're not using, and they want it...
Yeah.
Go another men's house like this.
Easily, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd certainly encourage, and I know that maybe that gets into like, you know, nonprofit status, and, and being able to finance and purchase a home, or, or like you're mentioning, maybe just through donations, but I think we have a, a community that's willing to support, especially, and I, and I guess that's why I'm saying, I know that you guys have a lot of personal and professional expertise, and holding people accountable, I, I really appreciate the honesty, the transparency, and I know in 12-step, and that's just really a part of the recovery process, is being open and honest, and so I appreciate you guys living that example and, and showing us here at the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for having us, we appreciate it very much.
So, before you, before you get off, before you wander off, I, my turn. I have to wait till the end, so, oh, yeah, this, yeah, this, if you want, are you sure? Okay, last chance. So, you kind of answered it, but I wanna make sure, if somebody wants to donate, whether it's monetarily, stuff, you know, how do they get ahold of you?
Any of the numbers on the back of that sheet.
Okay. Also, the email address goes to all of us, so we can talk about it or anything like that, but, yeah.
Okay.
We can do anything without talking to each other.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's, communications is a great thing, isn't it?
Clear.
So...
We are not a nonprofit, we are an LLC.
Okay.
Nonprofits have too many rules that we can't, for this.
Okay, so, the email is, is to walkwithpurpose, all one word, at gmail.com, is that, that's correct? Okay, and if it is, if it is acceptable, maybe we can attach a copy of this to the minutes or to the online, great, so we'll, we wanna get that out there, one of the reasons...
I'm gonna jump in here real quick, just for those of you who weren't listening, or who were listening but didn't see, the TO Walk With Purpose is the number two, if you missed that, you might have thought it was just the word TO, but it's the number two.
This is the number two.
For those that are tuning in on YouTube.
Audio. You don't see it.
Okay.
Now, now that my train of thought has been completely derailed, thank you, sir, for doing that, um, no, I've had the opportunity to, to, to speak with Shelley over numerous occasions, and I've worked with her in the past on other things, and another one of the, one of them, one of the people who I won't point out was a teacher for one of my kids, two of my kids, so, but, you guys are doing great work, and, you know, doing, taking the time out of your, you know, to, to make this a priority that serves our community, shows so much about your family, and we can't say enough good things about what you're doing, so, please keep it up, I'm glad you brought, you came here to tell us about it, and bring awareness to what you guys are doing on a daily basis to help out the folks in our community, it just shows that Hermiston and what we can do here in Hermiston when we put our minds to it, and you guys just are the, are the epitome of that, and I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Now you can go. And thanks all of you for showing up to, to support them, that is, that's fantastic. Okay, now, we are at the time for citizen input on non-agenda items, anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to please do the following, please limit your comments to not more than five minutes, state your name and mailing address, and direct your comments to me. Who's first?
Go first.
Okay.
Harry Schaefer, and I am the area general manager at the Oxford Suites. Carrie Schaefer, I am the area general manager at the Oxford Suites. We're here with Mike.
Can you, can you speak into the microphone?
Carrie Schaefer.
There we go.
Um, I am the area general manager at Oxford Suites and we have hoteliers with us. And we have a couple of concerns and we want to work well with our um, our city. And um, just want to give you some information. We're going to kind of, as a group, um, Cash really has the, the beginnings to tell you about what T, our um, what our tourism tax, why it was brought about and the beginnings of it, because I'm sure that most of you weren't here when that happened. I wasn't here when that happened, but he has more information about that.
Hello, my name is uh, Vikas Narain. Um, I'm the manager of Best Western Hermiston. And we've owned and uh, ran that property uh, since 1996, family owned and operated. So um, yeah, sorry. So uh, we own the Best Western, my family and I, we've owned and operated Best Western uh, since 1996. We also have the Denny's up there as well. Um, so yeah, today we're here to talk about the TPA, which stands for uh, transient promotion assessment. So what, what is TPA? So what it is, is the tax that we as hotel, as hotels charge our guests who stay at our hotel. If you're staying at our hotel, we have um, a special line that says TPA, which is a two dollar tax per night, uh, per room. Um, and that's, it's a line item with all of our other taxes. So the main reason for TPA is for EOTech. So one dollar goes to marketing and promotion of EOTech and the second dollar goes to the funding of EOTech. As hotel years, we all agreed to do this TPA, I believe in 2012 or 2013 is when we agreed to do it. Um, it was one dollar at first and then gradually um, we moved it to two dollars. And the original vision and why we all agreed to do it was to expand on EOTech, to make it into a venue where we can have um, many events to generate more room nights. Uh, rather than just um, you know, to have more room nights, that will help generate or help stimulate the economy. You know, if people, if you have more people staying at our hotels, you know, they're going to start going to our restaurants more, convenience stores, gas stations, it's just kind of, it's a benefit for the whole city. For us, most of the guests that stay at our hotel are construction workers, mostly Amazon workers. Um, and I believe there's some solar panels that are going up in Boardman, so we get overflow from Boardman as well. So that's, most of our, most of our business is week, weekday business, Monday through Thursday, Monday through Friday. So when we sign up to do EOTech, I guess the vision was to generate more room nights on weekends. So I kind of gathered some of the hotels together to just talk about like, what are the, what is their experience um, after over 10 years of having, you know, EOTech and paying this TPA. Um, and many of the hotels I've talked to, hotel owners I talked to say they haven't seen any like business or any benefit from EOTech. Because, you know, usually, like I mentioned before, all of our, we, all of our businesses, weekends and week, 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 sorry, weekdays. And weekends, we are still struggling. So that's something that we know the reason why we agreed to do it. So there's like no tourism in this town still with, even with EOTech. So I decided to um, ask for a records request uh, for some fi, um, of how the, how the transient tax or how the TPA is being spent. We know that 50% of it, you know, one dollar is being used for the funding and one dollar is used for marketing. But when I go on your website, um, all of the TPA, the TLT tax and other taxes are all lumped together into one line here. So the hotel years are asking for, uh, that's why I asked for the records request to see what is the breakdown of the TPA? Is it being spent where it should be spent? Is it, are we spending it on marketing? Are we spending it, you know, where, where we can start to see some revenue generated for the hotel years? That's um, that's kind of what I'm, that's the reason why I submitted that. So that's kind of what I'm looking forward to see and, and share that with other hotels, because they're interested as well to see um, where that funding's being spent. So.
Thank you.
We'd like a line items, so we can see exactly where the money is going. I mean, it should be going to marketing because we want to make sure that our marketing for the city is where it needs to be outside of Hermiston, of course. And we want to make sure that um, we work with you to maybe um, increase our weekends and then our lower season. We're going into our lower season now and we want uh, more occupancy in our hotels. We just want a little more transparency and we look forward to working with you as a group. We have put together a um, working group that we are looking into all of these things and seeing how we can better bring in more room nights. We want room nights of more than one night, one, two preferably. And we want to make sure that we're maximizing our revenues, which obviously will maximize the revenues for um, the city as well. For the hotel years, we'd like to have a group, maybe a committee within the um, city council and us, so that we can sit down and go over that. We're all professionals at what we do and we know best on how to market our area and we'd like to work with you to do that. Um, we'd like to see what the um, the records requests that we put in for last week, if there's an expiration date on that and if there's a renewal timeline, if anyone exists. And then we want all of the spending allocations. That's kind of what we're looking for. Again, we just want to maximize our revenues, which maximizes the city's revenues as well. Um, I'd like to make sure everyone.
Okay, hold on. Yeah, one at a time.
Okay.
You know, each, you only get five minutes.
Okay, I'm just letting somebody else talk. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Enkid Mongra. I own and operate uh, Motel Six Hermiston, as well as Fast Mart in Yumattila County. So we're here today because we're not seeing weekend business. You know, like I have, I run the economy scale. We have upper scales here and mid scales here. And one thing that we all can agree on is on the weekend, on the weekdays, we go from 70% and on the weekends, we're at 30%. At 30%, we cannot pay bills. Everything has increased, right? Our insurance has tripled in the last two years. Payroll has gone up. Every line item has gone up when it comes to operating our business. Um, we kind of want a seat at the table, whether it's us all together or like a one person dedicated to kind of see what's happening in EOTech and where we can help. Like we are the people that are going to house people that come here for tourism. So, you know, we're just asking for a seat at the table and kind of just how we can fix this, because we're not selling enough. And there's nothing really bringing tourism into our market where it's putting heads in beds. So, you know, just we can come to like a common ground. So that's what I have.
My name is Neel Shpatel. I own and operate Oyo Hotel here on a main street. Um, I echo what other hoteliers already has shared here and we are looking for the partnership on how we can better do for the Hermiston with the TPA tax and bringing the more tourism into the city.
Good evening, good evening. By the way, uh, excuse me, I know Ed Brookshire very well. Personally met him many times, uh, but, excuse me. And he was always concerned about uh, business. Uh, he would just uh, come over to the Best Western, at Dennis, and we have coffee and things like that. He was always concerned about how the hotels are doing.
Can I get your name?
Vijay Narain from Best Western. I uh, I think that E, uh, EOTech started uh, 10, I think 12 years ago. And uh, nothing had happened in between, like they all said. Weekend is the one that we are really need business. So instead of building one here, I built one in Boardman to s- build a hotel in Boardman four years ago. And I've been planning on extend, extending Best Western, but uh, I think we need help. Is this, if this the way it's going to be, then uh, I may not do it. Because Monday through Friday, we do really good. Thursday, I mean, Friday, everybody checks out. Saturday, Sunday, I mean, I, I, I had 15 rooms last night, 20 room night before. 50 rooms Monday through Thursday. And Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, nothing. It's just we're lucky to get people drive by. So we are only concerned that EOTech is going to help us uh, over the weekends maybe? If we can do something to help, is there anything we are doing wrong or just something city can do for us? Thank you.
Thank you. I would encourage you guys to work with Mr. Smith in regards to this. He uh, his uh, he and his office is responsible directly for this type of thing. Uh, we don't handle the day to day operations, but we do appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Um, I do know that as it, in regards to uh, EOTech operations, that uh, the hoteliers do have a, have a seat at the EOTech board. And that, you know, that's where, that's where that type of thing is handled, is my understanding, so. But again, I would, I would encourage you to speak with Mr. Smith in regards to these, your concerns and get him to weigh in on, on that. We're not, but that's not something we generally do here tonight. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Do we still have a representative on the EOTech board? Because I know that the hoteliers have different ones at different times and I don't know.
The last one that we had that uh, was represented um, resigned and was not able to make meetings. And we've worked through the chamber to try to get another and have not received any feedback, so we'll try again.
Okay. All right, any other citizen input? Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Uh, let's see. Consent agenda items A through E. Uh, are there any council comments or questions on consent agenda items A through, I'm sorry, A through F, A through E, A through E, sorry? None, okay? Any public comment on consent agenda items A through E?
It is F.
It is F?
Yes.
Oh, yes, it is F. Thank you. I was looking at it, it was A through F. Yeah, we definitely need F on there, don't we? They're over here, they're dirty. Uh, yeah. Okay, uh, any council comments on consent agenda items A through F? Seeing none. Does council wish to remove any items? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F?
Motion to approve, second.
Been motioned by Mr. Hayward, seconded by Counselor McCarthy. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. No items removed. All right, uh, next, uh, on other misdemeanor case distribution, say manager Smith.
Yes, uh, we'll have Court Administrator Julian Viles give this presentation.
Ms. Viles.
Good evening, Count, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. Um, I am bringing before you a discussion about our misdemeanor case distribution uh, for Hermiston Municipal Court. So just a little bit of background information, um, in 2014, the city council voted to move class A misdemeanor cases to circuit court. Um, the B and C misdemeanor cases remained with Hermiston Municipal Court. And then last year in 2024, um, city council reversed that and voted to bring, resume the jurisdiction of class A misdemeanor cases back to Hermiston Municipal Court. If you aren't familiar with misdemeanor cases, A's are the most severe, C being less severe. A little more background information, just on the attorney positions that we've had with Hermiston Municipal Court. So I'm going back to when I started, which was January 2022. Um, right after I started, our city prosecutor at the time gave his notice to terminate his contract. Um, he just had, his life was becoming busy outside of this part-time position and he wanted to focus on that. He later rescinded that and stayed with us. Um, and then in 2024, our defense attorney at the time gave his notice to terminate his contract. Um, and then in April, we had a new defense attorney step up and be able to take that contract. Also in April, our city prosecutor then really did give his notice and left um, to pursue a new job opportunity. And in July, we uh, found a new city prosecutor to accept a contract. During that April to July gap of not having a city prosecutor, city attorney Tubby stepped in um, and covered that as best as he could. And then in November, we got a secondary defense attorney that accepted the contract. So the reason we needed two defense attorneys is in case there are co-defendants on a case, the same defense attorney can't represent both of them. So we have to have more than one attorney on that case. So um, our secondary defense attorney would take two to four cases a month, depending on what we need. And then our primary defense attorney would take the majority of them. And then this year in February, our um, primary defense attorney gave her notice to terminate her contract. And since then, we've been utilizing our secondary defense attorney only for our cases. So what we've done to find a defense attorney to fill that position, um, we published a request for proposal in March of 2025. That was shared on the Oregon State Bar website, the Sixth Judicial District Bar Association. So that's attorneys that are in Yumattila and Moro County. That was shared with all of them. Um, I published it on the National Association for Public Defense, as well as it was posted on our website. So why are we having such a hard time finding defense attorneys or even prosecutors for our court? Um, this is not a uniquely Hermiston problem. It's not a unique to Eastern Oregon problem necessarily. So back in 2018, the Sixth Amendment Center came out to Oregon and studied our circuit court system. Um, part of that was a reflection on the public defense system and they saw that was very flawed. So they were seeing that attorneys were incentivized to take on as many cases as possible because they were paid per case. So obviously the more cases that you can get through and get done, the more money you get. Um, but this also conflicted with the attorney's ethical duty to provide due process rights to their clients. So after this report was published, um, the Oregon Public Defense Commission made some changes in how they structured their defense contracts. And so they capped the number of misdemeanor cases that one attorney can handle to 300 cases per year. Um, and they also upped the pay for that to just over $213,000. So what's been the resulting impact of that is that defense attorneys have, are at capacity with the number of cases that they can take. Um, this has resulted in over 5,000 individuals in the state of Oregon being charged with a crime and they don't have a defense attorney to represent them. Um, and attorneys are not willing to be paid under what the Oregon Public Defense Commission will pay them. So how this is impacting us is Oregon Public Defense Commission is willing to pay approximately $710 per case at the circuit court level. We pay, we pay a flat monthly contract rate, but it averages to about four to 500 per case. Um, talking to municipal courts on the west side of the state, they have more attorneys on that side and so they are actually paying a lower rate than what we're having to pay in Eastern Oregon. But it's still, we're all below what that circuit court, Oregon Public Defense Commission rate is willing to pay. So because we have been unable to find a defense attorney to take a contract with the Hermiston Municipal Court, um, we are proposing that all misdemeanor cases cited by the Hermiston Police Department should be sent to the Yumattila County District Attorney's Office for prosecution. we are proposing that all misdemeanor cases cited by the Hermiston Police Department should be sent to the Yumattila County District Attorney's Office for prosecution, beginning January 1, 2026. Advantages for this is that the court's costs and the city's costs would decrease because we would no longer have the need for a full-time city prosecutor and a full-time public defender for our court system. Disadvantages is because the DA's office is handling so many more cases, including felonies and much more severe cases. Low-level misdemeanor cases may not be a priority like they would be if they were in Hermiston Municipal Court. This doesn't mean municipal court is going away. We would still exist, obviously traffic cases would still all come to us, and all current criminal cases have to be handled until they're done. So a misdemeanor case can be on probate, bench probation for up to five years. Warrants can be issued during that process, so by my estimation, our court would still be handling criminal cases to some impact until 2032. It would just be, we wouldn't be taking any new cases, we would just be finishing out all the cases we currently have. With that, we would still need a part-time city prosecutor and a part-time defense attorney. But the estimated cost reduction for that in the next fiscal year would be 50 to $100,000. This would not impact really revenue received because criminal cases are such a minor portion of the revenue the court receives. Most of our revenue is driven from traffic cases. So what is the alternative to this? The alternative would be for us to put out a request for proposal at a comparable rate to what OPDC is paying their attorneys right now, and also at the maximum caseload of 300 misdemeanor cases. With that max capacity at 300, we would probably need almost two full-time defense attorneys. So if we were paying at that rate, we're paying a little over, or close to 450,000 for defense attorneys. Advantages, criminal cases would remain with Hermiston Municipal Court. Our city prosecutor files approximately 90% of the cases that are sent their way from Hermiston Police Department. They're filed quickly, meaning that we can usually get people into court and hopefully intervene in that behavior so that they aren't repeat offenders. Disadvantages, this is a significant cost increase for the court and the city. I also would anticipate that the city prosecutor would then ask for an increase in pay since the city, or the defense attorney is being increased. There are a lot of openings for attorney positions right now, so even publishing it at this rate, there's no guarantee that we would find an attorney to fill this position. So that is just kind of the situation, recommendation, alternative, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel questions?
Sir? Yeah, thank you for that presentation. I guess my question is, do other surrounding communities currently contract with the county court to, to handle their misdemeanor cases?
So the, oh, do other, are other municipal courts moving to certain parts?
Doing similar things.
Not at this time. I've heard there's discussion about it, but no one else has had to make this decision like we are.
Okay.
So that would only be Pendleton, correct? That would have, they'd be doing criminal? Or does, do any of the smaller cities do criminal?
I feel like Milton-Freewater might do.
Okay.
Criminal.
Okay. So Milton-Freewater and Pendleton, the others only do traffic like we would propose.
Okay. Is this, I, I take it the attorney shortage is something that's statewide, it's not just unique to us?
I, it is statewide. I feel like we feel it more on the east side of the state. We have fewer attorneys out here than the west side, so we feel it more severely, but it's being felt across the state.
So, I mean, thank goodness, I don't know a lot about how the defense court system works. I haven't been through it personally, but has anybody looked at contracting with a law firm to provide labor essentially?
So that's what these are, requests for proposals that we send out there. Any attorney in Oregon is getting notified of those, and so if they're part of a law firm, they have to be able to respond to that. So I have not gone to specific law firms and asked them if they're interested. But they would be aware of this, and if they were interested, they would have to submit a proposal to us.
Okay. I guess I was under the impression we were contracting with an attorney.
Correct.
There are law firms that have many attorneys.
Correct.
And I don't care which body they provide. If they're providing the service, that's what I want, right?
But they can also be doing that for the Oregon Public Defense Commission and being paid a lot more than what we are willing to pay at this time.
Okay.
Counsel Litten?
So basically, what I'm, I would like to know, we're going back to where it originally was before it was voted in that Hermiston would take these cases, is that correct?
No, we are going back to I, before municipal court ever took criminal cases. So what was reverted in 2024 is municipal court had B and C misdemeanors, A misdemeanors went to Circuit Court. We are now recommending that everything goes to Circuit Court. That we would not keep any criminal cases except for the ones we've already been filed and are processing.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
How many would that be?
How many cases would that be?
Okay, so then you would keep going and then until it runs out, right?
2032. Right, so I don't know off the top of my head how many cases we currently have filed. So that includes open cases, cases on probation, cases on diversion, cases with warrants outstanding. There, it's a, it's a lot of cases still, yes.
Any other counsel comments, questions?
Yes, sir.
I'm curious, knowing that there's, there are two cities that do have a prosecutor and a defense attorney. What are the, is it, what are they doing different? Is it just sheer availability or convenience that some other attorneys can do that? Is it more pay? How do they have attorneys and we're struggling to find some?
Are you referring to Pendleton?
Pendleton and Milton.
I don't know what Pendleton is doing differently than we are. There are just more attorneys in Pendleton than there are in Hermiston. Not saying that they can't commute, they don't want to commute, I don't know. They just haven't been willing to participate.
That's a fair assessment. I, I guess I would have wanted maybe to know exactly what they were doing if, like I said, if maybe it was just, like you're saying, maybe there are just more attorneys, it's where the county seat's at, it's where more state offices are, that, that makes sense. But I, I don't know if, I guess, the reason in particular. Thank you.
Yeah, hold on. Ms. R.
Thank you. So what kind of an impact? I see the monetary impact. But what kind of an impact will it have in our city when it comes to safety? More criminal activity? That sort of stuff?
It's really hard for me to say what that would look like. I could give a really good guess, but my understanding is HPD will still continue to cite people. So it's not that crime is gonna go unnoticed or unpunished. HPD will still be out there doing their job. It's just they will then be sending the cases to Circuit Court and to the district attorney's office instead of coming to us. How that plays out in the long term, I'm not sure.
Is it appropriate for me to ask the chief of police what, how?
Sure. You're asking me the same question? Yep, I think Julian answered it appropriately. We're gonna continue to do our job. Let me make sure everybody else has chansels. Any other questions before I go back? Okay.
So you said that crime would continue to be punished, but if the Circuit Court drops low-level misdemeanors, then it will not get punished, isn't that correct? So if I'm Joe the Shoplifter and I go to Walmart every day and I shoplift, it's a Class C misdemeanor because I'm stealing a $5 pack of gum every day. The court's not gonna hear that. I mean, they're choosing the priorities, they're gonna automatically drop my Class C misdemeanor every day. And I'm just gonna keep doing what I'm doing, isn't that correct?
Potentially, yes.
Thank you.
So I see someone from the Pendleton office.
He's gonna, he's gonna have an opportunity.
Oh, perfect. I wanted to ask.
He'll, he'll have an opportunity.
Perfect.
So I get, I'm gonna ask, so what are we currently paying right now? If we had both attorneys, what would we be paying a, a year for that, for, for two attorneys?
We have $150,000 budgeted for defense attorneys.
Just for, just for two?
For the defense attorneys.
Just period, $150,000?
Right.
Okay.
So that's one.
Well, it's also, I mean, we say one because they pick up the cases that, that maybe there's a conflict or, or if there needs to be extra, it's not, they don't have a full load, the second one.
Okay, so. And the, and I didn't write down which, which, the slide, but what, what is it, a year? That the defense counsel?
Two thirteen. For one, that's one caseload. We think there would be two caseloads.
Okay, so when we had two, we're still only using $150,000 to pay them?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other counsel questions? Counselor Hayward?
Have we reached out to like colleges over in Portland, some of the bigger cities, fresh graduates? See if they want it or something, or see if they're, why they're not appealing to it, or what's going on?
I haven't directly, and like I said, it's been on the Oregon State Bar, so any member who's a member of the Oregon State Bar, attorneys that are members of the State Bar, get that notification. In talking to some other attorneys across the state, I haven't directly asked them to come take this contract, but I think people that aren't from this area are hesitant to move out to this area to start a brand-new business in a field that they haven't really gotten a lot of experience in yet. So that would be kind of what I've understood.
All right, any other counsel questions? Okay, public comment?
Mayor Primmer, council members. For the record, my name is Dan Primmus, Yumattila County District Attorney, 216 Southeast Fourth Street, Pendleton, Oregon. So to answer, I guess, some of the questions before I kind of get started, you were talking about the two, the, the two other municipal courts that operate, one being the City of Pendleton, which handles a very similar, it's the same exact caseload that the, the City of Hermiston sends right now. And then Milton-Freewater, Milton-Freewater is not a full misdemeanor caseload, they handle a partial or just a few cases. I would say anyone that they take into custody gets sent our way. So it's a very, it's a small number for the City of Milton-Freewater as they're operating. City of Pendleton is the same exact as the City of Hermiston, just for a real reference as to what, what we handle in our office. I, I took over as a district attorney back in 2011. Been the district attorney for 14 years, I've been in the DA's office for 17 years. And during the transition from the previous DA to myself, John Kroger was running the office. At that time, when John Kroger was running it remotely, I was running it within the office, and that is when we elected to, to start taking all A misdemeanor domestic violence cases. So that has been going on since 2010. If there is a domestic violence, A misdemeanor in the City of Hermiston or in the City of Pendleton, they get sent to us no matter what, even with the municipal courts, that was just something that we operated and worked with. Mainly because A misdemeanor domestic violence cases can be supervised formally with formal supervision. Plus, we have individual attorneys within our office that are trained to handle domestic violence cases. So we had that contract from the outset. I actually worked with Ed, it was back in, before 2014, when they made the transition, when they wanted to start transitioning the A misdemeanors. So for the record, just so that the, the, the counsel understands completely what that means, is we're talking about driving under the influence cases, theft in the second degree when you're over $100, but just below $1,000, so 100 to 999. Any sort of a, an assault in the fourth degree, non-domestic violence. The typical would be maybe like a bar fight, driving while suspended misdemeanors, failure to perform the duties of a driver, a hit-and-run. Those are the, those are the most common type of cases that are the A misdemeanor. The B and C are gonna be the theft in the third degree, which is the, the gum, that you're speaking of, anything under $100, harassment, stuff of that nature. So I wanted to just kind of give that background just a little bit. And I think to just answer one other thing too as well, and I'm, Ms. Viles, I'm not, this isn't a comment on, on what that was said there. But to say that it would not be a priority in the district attorney's office is maybe a little bit misleading. It's not that it wouldn't be a priority, it's just a matter of we will have to prioritize. So the, so the counsel's aware, you're talking two full-time defense attorneys, you said two full, which is telling me roughly 600 cases is what would be added on. So the counsel's aware, I receive over 3,000 a year already in Yumattila County. This would be an additional 600. You guys are talking about the City of Pendleton, they're in the same exact conversations that you guys are having right now. So as you guys go to make that decision, they're gonna be making a very similar decision. So you gotta think another 600 that will be, that'd be falling on my lap. So you're talking 1,200 plus cases that will be added to the 3,000 that we already have. So a third again. I'm allotted, just to give background, I understand that you guys have a very difficult decision to make, one that involves fiscal responsibility as well as public safety. And it's not an easy discussion that you guys are having. But as you guys are going to make that decision, I want you guys to be fully educated. I want to be transparent so that you know what you're signing up for. Because the questions that you have in regards to individuals not seeing punishment or individual crimes or seeing crime go up within your community is obviously something that is a concern for everybody in Eastern Oregon, and specifically for me. When you sit and see the numbers that are up there, I can remember day one, that when I worked in the district attorney's office. I remember day one when I signed up and I got sworn in by Judge Brower and I sat in chambers. And he said, you're gonna be a public servant. And I said, I am. He said, you know what it means to be a public servant? I said, I think so. And he gave a very short answer. He said, it's long hours, low pay. You ready for that? Seventeen years later, I tell you what. It is long hours. I was in trial today, handling a substantial quantity of methamphetamine case. Got a verdict at 5:00 in the courts. I'm here tonight, I have 65 cases tomorrow. My wife texted me just now that she'll meet me with dinner. Because I'm going back to the office. Because when Judge Brower said it's long hours and low pay, it's long hours and low pay. So to see that number is shocking for me. It's not what my people see. So I just wanted to give that just as a little bit of perspective as you guys go to make this decision. I'm supposed to have nine full-time deputies and one part-time deputy in my office. I'm at four full-time deputies. One additional deputy that works remotely. That's five of the nine. I said I have 65 cases in court tomorrow because I'm doing the same exact caseload that I was doing when I started 17 years ago, day one. For two reasons, one, I love what I do. I'm a glutton for punishment. Two, I don't have the staff to do it, and I can't continue to burden my staff with the work that they have. So I take it and I bear it. That's why I'm going back to work tonight. We have a halftime or a part-time handles all of our grand jury proceedings. I do have two, and we have utilized what's called the SPPE, which is the practicum. It is a desert in Eastern Oregon, literally when we're talking about attorneys. Seventeen years I've worked in this office. I can't name one year where we were fully staffed. You talk about working in the law schools, I was at Willamette Law School, and I was at University of Oregon just two and a half weeks ago, presenting as a rural prosecutor, trying to encourage 1L and 2L law students to come to Eastern Oregon. It's exactly what I'm trying to do. So we're at, we're at half capacity, trying to handle the caseload that we currently have at the 3,000. 3,000 plus. For a little bit of perspective, you guys took the cases back in 2024, January. Right now, we're on pace for 200 more cases received by law enforcement this year than the previous year. Take out the A misdemeanors that's already been taken back, we're at 200 more. We're 30 cases filings away, which is probably by the end of next week, for matching last year's numbers, filed on with two and a half months to go. That's a credit to my staff and the work that they're doing and the hours that they're putting in to be able to meet that at this point. Not only are we working at capacity in our office, so are the Yumattila County Circuit Courts. Absolutely working at capacity. Absolutely working at capacity, we used to run four adult courtrooms, we now have two. We have a part-time third courtroom that handles arraignments, and the overflow from my courtroom, because it's so busy. So on Fridays now, they take on my changes of plea, my diversion entries, my probation violation hearings that we can't meet in my office, or in my courtroom. We're talking about the three hundred misdemeanors that the Oregon Public Defense Commission has set as their maximum capacity for misdemeanors. That's what they believe is their ethical limit, we do not have that as prosecutors. We are just handed files and expected to file on them. To give just a little bit of a perspective with what I'm working with, the last time we counted the cases in my courtroom, which are a balance of misdemeanors and felonies, I'm at over three hundred and fifty current cases, not yearly cases, current cases. Cases that I have currently responsible for knowing. As one goes out, multiple come in. We talk about the Oregon Public Defense Commission, and with where they're at, we have a shortage there when it comes to our cases. My eight fifteen docket tomorrow consists of just five of the sixty-five cases that I have. Two of them do not have an attorney, and they've been assigned the Oregon Public Defense Commission to try and locate them attorney, if it's in Eugene, if it's in Salem, if it's in Portland, wherever it may be, Malheur County, to try to pick up our workload that we don't have for attorneys. The person, one of them that's gonna show up, this will be the third time they've shown up and stand in front of the court where the court cannot appoint them an attorney. We have not dismissed or gotten rid of any cases, the circuit court has not. But the circuit court has to start having hearings on these to set release hearings on individuals and/or looking at whether or not they're gonna dismiss because a defendant has a constitutional, constitutional right to have counsel. When we talk about the fact that it's not gonna be, when I say it won't be a priority for us in our office, it's not that it won't be a priority. Its priority is determined in statute. So currently, right now, in courtroom three, our Mondays are set for misdemeanor trials, Wednesdays and Thursdays are set for felony trials. I had a felony trial slide in today, and I have another one on Wednesday. We are typically stacking those six deep on those given days every week. So I'll have twelve more trials next week that we will be ready for, whichever one goes on those respective days. The reason we talk about priority is, is just the way in statute, it goes in custody, sixty-day trial sets, those that are being held, felonies, on down. So B and C misdemeanors is just at the bottom, they're just gonna be prioritized because, uh, lower, because that's the way it is in statute. Now, when I talk about our cases, I don't think a lot of people know, you know, the totality of the work that the district attorney's office is doing. And so when you add the As, the Bs, and the Cs to our office, that's extra work that we have, which is fine, that's what we sign up for, right? But just to give a little bit of a perspective, so Ms. Jenkins, who I know every, majority of you in this room are probably aware of Ms. Jenkins, she's the best attorney, not only in eastern Oregon, I would say probably in the state. She currently has twenty measure elevens on her caseload, twenty. So for you guys that don't know what measure eleven is, that is your murder, homicide, rape in the first degree, sex abuse in the first degree, kidnapping in the first degree, arson in the first degree, these are your mandatory minimum sentences, the most serious offenses that we have in our, in our state. I would venture to guess that's at the Mac of what it would be for OPDC, and it's on her current. She has twenty-one pending that she's in review and or working with, law enforcement with to try to get charged, which will put her at forty-one. When we talk about priority, we're talking about a shooting at seven eleven that's set for trial in January, that has to be a priority for me. If we're talking about an individual that uses a machete on another, another attempted murder, that has to be a priority for me. When we're talking about children who are sexually molested and or abused, and or facing what we call Jessica's Law, they absolutely have to be priority for me. But the difficult part is you guys rarely or probably rarely hear about those types of cases, we just do that work. The cases that we hear about are the livability crimes. The ones that we're talking about today. The livability crimes such as the theft three from your local D and B, coast-to-coast Zimmerman's Ranch and Home. It's the criminal mischief or the criminal trespass that's occurring with our local businesses that they're showing up for. It's the mentally ill individuals that we see daily on our streets. These are the livability crimes. Counselor Brown, you were over at, you were over at, in Pendleton for our city council meeting, we had how many people there? Hundreds of people there for this exact thing in regards to livability crimes. These are the ones that touch our community. These are the ones that impact our community. These are ones that impact our daily life. These are the individuals that are the repeat. These have a, a, a direct impact on the community. I don't bring this to you or this news or this try to open up in this way is to say, I'm not willing or I'm not wanting. It's I have to wonder at what point is my capacity and where is my capacity? I'm not gonna stand up here in front of you guys, as some of my colleagues have around the state, and say I will not file on B and C misdemeanors. I think that sends the wrong message. I do not want to send that message to the community saying I will not do that. Because it, it tells those offenders o- open game, right, free game, and I will not do that. But we will do the best we can, I understand, I don't have a say in this decision. I appreciate the group that came to discuss this with me without just dropping it in my lap, so I could at least think about it, what is coming. I appreciate my relationship with Chief Edmundston. It's been great, and it still is, right, it's a great relationship I have with, with the city here. And so this isn't anything to knock, I don't want to say anything, this is nothing negative. But I want to be completely transparent. Because the last time when A misdemeanors were sent to me, again, it wasn't necessarily a decision that I had, I took some flak from members within the community, or even on the council regarding the length of time it took for me to be able to get to some of these cases. This time, I wanted to be able to express the workload that is in front of me and the workload that my office has taken on, so that there is an open line of communication as to what we have to deal with and what we are doing currently. I'm here as long as you guys need. If I can answer any questions for you, I'd be, be glad to try to answer questions.
Start this end.
DA Premis, thank you for presenting, thank you for your words and, uh, the insight that you have. I, having worked at that office before, I know the dedicated men and women do a lot, uh, that are there day and night. My question for you is regarding compensation. Has the county, uh, increased compensation to make it more lucrative for DA's to come to this area, or has there been any relocation packages, is there anything we can support the county on to help you and your office?
So the county's been, county's been great to work with, I believe that the, um, I think the salary and the compensation packages that are there for our DA's is as competitive as you will see around the state. We are very similar, honestly, to starting pay as what a Washington County would be in Hillsborough, which is kind of unheard of when you would think about when I first started. Uh, and, and so the compensation is great, the, the most two recent hires that I have are law clerks that I've brought on, we have struggled to have law clerks, one of the, one of the difficulties with having, the, the law schools and or the institutions and trying to get in there is, it's, they're in Portland, Salem, and Eugene. And so an individual that's going to school there, it's hard to get out to eastern Oregon if you have no connection. So we've found people that have had connection, but the county has assisted with that as well, we pay well. We sought out Santiago Sinisneros, a, a Hermison High School graduate, family has construction and business here in town. Um, he, he interned for us last year, and we are full court pressed trying to find a way to get Mr. Sinisneros to come work here full-time. But the most two recent hires have come from law clerk positions, that is a funded position that the county has added, as well as assisting with living, uh, um, in the summertime, helping with, um, housing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? But isn't it, uh, also, in addition to just the actual criminal case going into court, doesn't your office have to handle other, other duties basically as assigned, such as having to review search warrants and, and that, that's, that's in addition to the actual preparations for the cases?
I am on call twenty-four hours a day, I get called all the time. Uh, we are reviewing search warrants at two, three AM. Myself and Ms. Jenkins are on call for every measure eleven offense that has occurred, we get a phone call. Every homicide, we are on scene, and we are reviewing search warrants, it's, it's passed between the six of us, uh, to review that. We also handle all civil commitments, um, proceedings within the, within Umatilla County. Uh, we handle all, um, records, uh, public records, uh, denials. Uh, if, if there's a public records request here with the city, that the city denies, and they want to challenge, that comes to our office for review. Uh, the district attorney's office is kind of a catch-all at the state, so if they don't have somewhere to, to have someone to review it, it just kind of gets sent to us, so. We do a lot more than just criminal, yes.
Any other questions before I go back to Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, DA Premis, I just want to reiterate if there's anything that the city can do in, in partnership with the county, please know that you have an open line with, with the council, uh, with their city administration, I'm very happy that the city administration reached out and had a conversation with your office. But, uh, we, we would love to, to help and support, uh, I wish we could ourselves put bodies in there, um, to assist, but, um, between now and I guess whenever, uh, anything comes up, please let, please know that you have, uh, an ally here, someone that would love to help in partnership with however we can.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Premis, I appreciate you coming down and, and speaking with us today. Any other, uh, public comment? Seeing none, council comments? Uh, Council Roberts.
So first off, I want to say I'm glad the DA Premis came in today. I want to assure everybody, I have a lot of thoughts on this, and this will take me a couple of minutes, I, I wrote down some things that I was thinking. And, uh, I've not talked to DA Premis, and I say that because a lot of what I have to say, he presented on. So, I mean, nothing I'm about to say is gonna be a reflection on the DA's office, but obviously this is relatable to my line of work, and I have some insights in the processes and how, how it goes from arrest through prosecution. I've had the, the opportunity to speak with several of, uh, the deputy DA's over the years, and, and I've had those conversations where they've said, we're gonna have to dismiss a case. It's not because of the merits of the case, it's because the case, uh, is reaching statute limitations, uh, there are speedy trial issues, and a lot of it is due to the workload. And so those smaller cases do end up unfortunately falling through, uh, falling through the cracks. I want to give a perspective on what constitutes kind of a small case, because we've talked about that, right? A third-degree theft is anything under a hundred dollars, which is a class C misdemeanor. I would have to check with the chief, but I, I suspect that most of our, all of our retail thefts are still in the theft three, theft two category, um, as the DA said, under a thousand dollars, so that is our petty thefts from Walmart, Safeway, Dollar Tree. Second-degree criminal trespass, this is a case where somebody comes onto your property, they don't necessarily enter your house, but they're on your property, they refuse to leave, they're gonna get, uh, arrested. Um, that's a class C misdemeanor, same thing as your petty theft. There were bail reform laws enacted in Oregon a few years ago, so if somebody goes in on a second-degree criminal trespass, that is basically, without any other mitigating factors, they will get released, they're not gonna get held. Um, and so there's, there's not even really the, the consequence of, of staying in jail at that point. Disorderly conduct in the second degree is a class C misdemeanor, it falls under the same release categories as the second-degree trespass. This is your mentally ill subject yelling at traffic, this is your bar fight, this is your loud neighbor who refuses to turn down the music, that's, that's your disorderly conducts. Uh, criminal mischief, think of graffiti, we have a lot of that around, that's also kind of a lower level offense. There are many more, but my point is that in many of these cases, the, these crimes that we're talking about, as the DA said, are livability issues. And without any type of court sanction, there's no real punishment, there's no real deterrence. The DA rightly has to focus on high-level offenses such as homicides, major assaults, sex crimes, like rape or child sexual abuse, those types of things, and we can understand why they have to prioritize their caseload. From my knowledge, the DA's office simply does not have the manpower to file on the rush of cases that HPD is gonna send them. As the DA said, they're having a hard time keeping up now, and so by sending our cases to the DA's office, I don't see where we're in any better position than if we keep the cases at the municipal court and continue to attempt to find an attorney to contract the work. Probably surprising to hear me say that, because in two thousand and nineteen, when I was on the, uh, Budget Committee as a citizen member, I saw how much the, the municipal court costs, and I, I asked the question at that time, should we not do criminal cases anymore? Back then, I was told that the fast turnaround and swift punishments the court can provide is a benefit to the city, as it not only holds offenders accountable, but does so in a more rapid manner, which is a benefit to both the community and to the offender. And back then, I think the DA was in an even better position with their caseload, that's obviously not the case now. It is often said, you get what you pay for, and public safety certainly fits into that category. In the last three, in the last two years, through the COPS grant, our contract with, uh, Good Shepherd Hospital, the city has added, I think, uh, seven positions, eight. Eight police officers to the Hermiston Police Department. This action demonstrates the value that we as a city place in enforcing our laws. Enforcement, however, does not end at arrest, it is done throughout the entire justice process. The court is part of that process, so we need to show the same commitment, uh, there at the court as we do with the police department, because without accountability, there is no justice. I'm not in favor of sending misdemeanor cases to the DA at this time. I think we can change our minds in the future, uh, especially if things change at the DA's office. But right now, I think I'd be more in favor of finding a way to increase the funding to hire the contracted attorneys at the OPDC rate, continue prosecuting cases at the municipal court. And later, if we can't find the attorneys willing to do the work, then we can revisit the, uh, the issue. But under the current circumstances, the pros of trying to keep cases local at the municipal court outweighs the cons from a budgetary process, in my opinion.
Council Roberts, Councilor Hayward?
Um, I'm kind of there with Josh on this, but after hearing what he said, I didn't get insight on that. But like, um, a lot of people has said, public safety lands on our desk. We need to keep the public safety, I think we should keep this in-house. Maybe up the cost a little bit and try to entice some people to come this way to be a public defender or something, because if we don't, and they start repeating, the public's gonna come here and point at us. And let us know we made the wrong decision. Public safety is number one in my book, I think we should keep it here.
Other council comments?
Yes, sir. I probably won't be as eloquent as Mr. Roberts has been, but I, I agree with everything he said, I think if we don't prosecute the small crimes, we're going to become a tourist attraction for criminals. And people will know, they will get away, they might get arrested, they might, but they'll never go to court, and they'll never be punished for whatever it is they're gonna do. So if I'm Joe the habitual shoplifter, and I go to Walmart and I want to steal my ninety-nine dollars worth of stuff every day, I know I'm gonna get away with it, so I'm coming to Hermiston. And I don't think we want that, I, I've been on the council now since January, and the number one thing I hear behind, when are we gonna get another grocery store, or when are we gonna get another restaurant, is when are we gonna do something about the crime in this town? And I think voting to shove our misdemeanor, uh, caseload onto the DA is not something that's gonna help that, uh, perception, at least, and certainly also won't help it in practical terms, so. I'm, I'm for keeping it here in Hermiston. And finding a way to pay for it.
Councilor Brown?
When I asked my question earlier to Ms. Viles and the Chief of Police, I never really intended that, um, you know, you weren't capable of, your, your staff would not be capable of doing their job, but mostly I wanted to paint a clearer picture, I guess, in my mind. I do agree with, you know, safety being a priority for our community. But is this something that maybe you guys can, administrative team can look into, see what we can do? What are our options? And, I mean, I don't know. Money doesn't grow in trees.
It would not be in front of you if we hadn't turned over pretty much every rock except for coming to propose to you what we might have to cut out of the general fund budget. And so we haven't gone to that point, but I mean, that's where we're at. If we want to come up with $250,000 for additional costs for public defense, and then that doesn't even factor when the judge and the prosecutor come and want to raise to match that. You know, so maybe three, three fifty, something like that. And so trying to find that kind of money, that, that, that's real money. And so that's why this recommendation is in front of you. It's not because we wanted to shove this onto the DA. I mean, we went and had a conversation with him and I, I don't want this. I don't think it's the best option, but we're out of options. We don't even know if we increased it, whether we'd get anybody. And so what do we do in that meantime? What do we do with these cases that just sit there? They're going to be the same because we aren't going to be able to file on them in municipal court because the capacity on our defense, I mean, she is, she's located in Portland and it, it's just not a full-time opportunity with what we currently have. So we'll take whatever direction you give and, but we've tried to give you the best information to, to make that decision with.
Okay, uh, let's see.
You can go first.
Counsel Brown?
Thank you. And having a conversation a little bit with the city manager to try to flesh out a little bit more of this information. This is a big presentation and it's a big decision for the council. In the meantime, that these cases aren't being prosecuted, they will be get, they will be continuing to get dismissed. And so at this point, with positions unfilled, people can't get an attorney and with no attorney, these cases will have to be either tabled or dismissed. I, like many of you, am not advocating for giving more work to the district attorney at this time when they have so much work on their plate. I am, however, interested in finding different solutions. And so we've had conversations in this council about the benefits of having a local court, having swift justice, having local justice. I think that's very important. But I feel like we're stuck between a rock and a hard spot at this point with advertising these positions that were going unfilled. I think at, at some point, it might even be that we start paying more than even the, the DAs get paid. And so I was quite frankly, interested in seeing if maybe the city could help out the county or if the county, I don't know if it takes counselors going to the county, seeing if maybe they on their end would increase pay and then as cities contribute to that. But I am all for, for looking for a solution because what's, what's going on right now is not sustainable at the city level, at the county level. I understand that this is a statewide issue. And so I'm open to suggestions. I don't really like any of these two options. And I do wish that we had more public defenders. I am curious and have been curious as through my questioning, what other cities are doing, what, what cities are doing in order to have a public defense in order for having a prosecutor? Because I'd like to see what we can do to mimic that, to incentivize that. But at, at this time, I, I would like to hear a little bit more fleshed out information too about what options we have. I'm for maybe increasing more pay for our, our city prosecutor, our city public defender. But I also worry that in the meantime, that we try to still continue to advertise this with more pay. If it does go unfilled, then these cases are just going to be dropping anyways. And so that, that's my concern. Every case has a statute of limitations and, and swift justice is, is necessary. And, and though I don't want to put this burden on our, our DA, I know that they still will prioritize and work through all these cases. Is it fair it's not? I, and I, I feel badly putting that burden on them. But at this time, i- if, if a move like that doesn't get done soon, then these cases are going to fall through the cracks anyways. And so I, I am conflicted, but I would, because I want to ask for more time to be able to conjure up a solution. But while time continues to pass, I worry about the cases that we currently have as a backlog. And so I'd be interested in, in, in my conversations too with the, the city manager and maybe we do transition this to the DA's office. In the meantime, we maybe continue to advertise this spot or these positions and continue to finding solutions to try to advertise public defenders and defense attorneys here. But my worry is what we do in the meantime. If we want to go the, the avenue of, let's increase pay, let's make it more lucrative. But if in the meantime, we still don't get anything, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult. And even with the changing of prosecutors or public defenders, like Ms. Viles pointed out earlier, when there is a new prosecutor or a new public defender that comes on, there's sometimes a tabling of cases. Cases go longer because the new public defender or the new prosecutor needs to pick up the case. They need to get familiar with it in order to be able to represent their clients well or in order to be able to prosecute it effectively. And so this is a, this is a hard decision, but for me, I, at this point, I'd be in favor of trying to work with the prosecutor's office, the DA's office, like our city manager has already tried to do, and then still find a local solution for us. I do worry about the pending cases and that justice will be enacted.
Sir, I have a question about the motions that are in front of us.
Okay, we'll get to those.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Counsel Hayward?
Maybe is there a way we can do a work session or something to kind of see what would happen if we did increase the pay? Will we, if there's a way, find out if there's a way people will accept it? Or also because Pelleton's looking at the same way, maybe we can try to work with them and double the pay and try to take all of that on or something to kind of benefit both cities.
I mean, I, I can't predict when someone is going to accept even higher pay, better benefits, any of that. I can't, I can't do that. And the DA just to, told us that his pay package was very competitive, competitive with counties on the west side. So, you know, I, I don't know. I, I'd be, I mean, I'm open if you want to table this for a month and let us work on it some more. I, I'm a little bit hesitant to say we'll have much of a different scenario, but maybe we can find something else. But that's, I'm open to, to giving that a shot if, if that's what the council wants.
Counsel Litten?
Um, I do have a question. How difficult would it be if to bring attorneys from maybe like, because I'm pretty sure in the south, they don't make much of nothing, to come up this way and get an Oregon license to practice law?
I don't know what that would take.
Okay. Because I'm a little bit of, I was a little bit conflicted about how I would vote and because I don't want to put a big load on, a heavy load, because I had to quit if I had to get up at two and three o'clock in the morning to, to work and get all those phone calls waking me up out of my sleep, you would not have a DA. So good thing I didn't go in that field. After Josh, Ms. Counsel Roberts went through his speech and said some things, I, I agree with him. I did not send that extra workload over that way. And at the same time, not being able to locally be able to do what's necessary to get the work, the job done. And it's like being between a rock and a hard place. And I understand that. But if we can look into what it takes to bring advertising, bring lawyers from another state and what they need to do to get qualified to practice here. And, but I'm going to vote that we don't send it out to DA's office.
All right. I think Counsel Myers is the only one who hasn't had a question or comment yet, so.
But, um, okay, they do advertise in other states, correct?
So we did advertise as part of the National Defense Association, though it went to a national level, yeah.
And I think, you know, bad as it sounds, the reason you aren't getting anything, or we aren't getting anything, or this area isn't getting anything, it's all about location. You know? The attorneys from Portland don't want to move out here. Can't move out here, you know, whatever. They don't have, well, they would have the resources, but they wouldn't have any kind of connections out here. And I just don't know that, no matter how long you advertise and keep upping it a little bit, a little bit incrementally, I just don't know what you're going to get, if anything.
All right. So everybody's had one shot. Counsel Roberts, back to you.
I think until we look at increasing the funding and then sending out an RFP, we're not going to know what we're going to get. And I can respect Counsel Brown's, you know, conflict there. But I think I look at it the same reasons, but from the other side of the coin in that the cases that we're looking at that, that might get dismissed at the municipal level. If we're intentional about trying to find the funding, look at the budget, see if there's someplace that we can trim and amend the budget to get this now. The number of cases won't be, in my opinion, or my, my mindset, significant before we have to make a decision. And so I, I would rather see city staff go through the budget, see where we can find this money, send out the RFP, and then we can revisit it and, and make a, a full determination on which way to go.
My turn?
Yeah.
Your turn.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate this conversation. I think we all have what's best for Hermiston, what's best for livability, what's best for justice. We want to be good partners as well, and I would be in favor of, as the city manager has mentioned, maybe tabling this for, and as Counsel Hayward maybe mentioned, a, a work session, something to flush things out a little bit more, maybe not so much in a month, but maybe the next council meeting. I don't know if we're already jam-packed for our next council meeting. But I would want to do this as swiftly as we could. This is a big conversation. This is a, a big discussion to be had. And so I, I'd like to request for a little bit more time to make a decision on this. That being said, as I mentioned before, without a prosecutor, without a public defender, or one or the other, it's going to be hard for cases to move forward whatsoever, right here, right now. And so I, I don't think the, the city manager would be bringing this and having conversations with the DA unless it was something that we absolutely could not do or something that was absolutely urgent. And so I, I respect what the city manager's brought forward. And I really appreciate the, the DA Premis for being here and, and giving his public testimony because this is something that's bigger than just Hermiston. It's a community, it's a county conversation. And as mentioned before, this is something that statewide, we're, we're having a deficit. And I also believe what Counsel Myers is saying is absolutely correct. And I think that might just be, might be inevitable that it's going to be hard for people to come here in the first place. And delaying time and making a decision would, might, might be the best decision to make, and I, I respect that. I, I would like, I respectfully request a quick turnaround and, and having a discussion about this, hopefully the next council meeting, so we can make a more informed decision about what the future prospects look like for our local court.
My turn. Okay. So, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but we currently have a prosecutor, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
We currently have, although it's our, a second, we currently have a contracted defense attorney, correct?
For limited use.
But we do have one. Limited use, yes, I understand limited use.
Not the full caseload.
Okay. In our, and, and, but that person operates primarily via Zoom, correct?
Correct.
So that is an option that is, that could be available basically anywhere across the United States. Has that been, has that been attached to the, to the advertisement?
Yes. So our city prosecutor is actually based out of Bend.
Okay. All right. That's, that was it. And about how many, we, how many cases are, are yearly do we handle?
With the A misdemeanors, we're going to be averaging between five and 600.
Okay. All right. Well, livability is, is primary. I mean, that is, that is what we get beat up on every, every, every time anybody speaks about what we do here in the city. And, and this, this speaks to livability in every, every way. And, you know, it is, it is hard. It's hard to kick the can down the road, but at the same time, we've got, you know, we've got a decision one way or another that we're going to have to make at some point in time, whether it's to keep and find money, pinch, pinch the budget harder or, you know, with, with the possibility of getting somebody or whether we do the, the most difficult decision of all is putting it, giving it back to the district attorney's office to try and, and handle all the, the stuff that we have, you know, that they currently handle in addition to, and in addition to, and in addition to. You know, and, you know, having worked with, with the District Attorney's Office for, well, basically since rocks were soft and dirt was new. I, I hate, I hate putting, putting anything to them more than what they're already handling, given their, their low, their low availability, for lack of a better word, because they've, they've just got so much to do as it is. And then for us to possibly pile on five, 600 more cases to that already difficult workload is, it's unfathomable for me. But that's where, that's the decision that we've got to make tonight, or at least part of the decision we need to make tonight. So with that, I will entertain a motion of any sort at this point in time.
Motion to table this.
Okay. Have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to table this issue. Do we have, do we want to include a, a time limit on that or?
A time limit and also for, for what criteria are we tabling it? Table, to me, means we're just not going to talk about it. Like, are we going to direct city staff to do something?
Okay. So furthering, can we get some further clarification on your motion to table?
Um, I think tabling to get more information, try to see what we can do to fix this because this is a big issue and the puck stands at us. I think we need to try to figure out how to solve this and try to look at all the options and say, hey.
So what are we going to direct city staff to do?
That's what I'm trying to think right now about really quick.
You want to, can you?
Somebody can help me.
Ask him to amend your emotion? Or motion, not emotion.
Um, I would like to amend the motion to consider city staff, to direct city staff to consider alternatives for budget cuts to allow for the increase in meeting the state recommendation.
And we need his second to his amended, right? Second.
Correct.
Okay, I second.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second, then a motion and a second. Are we, are we good on that, Mr. Tovey? Is that the way that we're doing this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So.
Now have an amended motion.
Okay, we have an amended motion. And can I get a roll call on the amended motion?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously on an amended to table for more information as soon as possible. Okay. Okay. Wow. Alright, report on communications, community engagement efforts, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so we've been doing a number of different things. It's one of your goals to improve communication and community engagement. So I just wanted to take this, take a few minutes at this meeting to kind of give you an update on various tools that we've been using and some data related to how effective or not effective those have been. And I'm stalling for Lily to get my presentation up.
So we like put a board up there so you can do a little tap dance? There it is.
Okay, so, and just what we're gonna, we're gonna go over a number of different tools that we've, that we've used. First, we're gonna talk a little bit about how our council meeting streaming has been reaching people. Then we're gonna talk a little bit about Inside Hermiston, which is the new newsletter. A tool called Ask Hermiston, which is a new addition to the website. Talk a little bit about City Chats, which is another kind of outreach and engagement, and then some surveys that we've been doing. Okay, so in, we started streaming in April of 2020. And we were pretty rough at the beginning, we used Amazon Chime for a little while, and we've done a different things. Now, our process is we use YouTube, I mean, we use Zoom that then streams to YouTube. And the, most of these statistics and numbers are coming from the YouTube. We don't have a lot of people that go directly to the Zoom, but so we have a hundred and fifty-four live feeds over the past five-ish years that are up on our YouTube channel. So far in 2025, sixteen council videos, there's two thousand and eighty-two views on those videos. And our viewership is between, and it's an average of fifty to eight, average of a hundred and thirty. So between the low of fifty and a high of one eighty-five views per council meeting, essentially. We have an average of about three concurrent viewers, so most of those views are coming after the meeting. There's not a lot of people watching live on YouTube. The, and, the other thing is, most people are just watching a portion of the council meeting. The average duration of a view is about thirteen minutes, and that's about, it's usually about eleven percent of the, of the video. So just, you know, once the view, the, the video is posted, there's ability to use a timestamp to go directly to a certain agenda item. So I just wanted to show you a couple of meetings and how the viewership went. So this was in February of this year, obviously, a lot of interest in the Amazon Water Supply Agreement. And then, you know, it kind of rose up to that one, and then tapers off on the other parts of the, of the video. And this one is a little bit later, when we were talking about the new apartment complex. Yeah, Mr. McCarthy.
Those timestamps are those embedded into the YouTube video itself?
So when you pull it up on our, yeah, when you pull it up on our website, you can choose, and it'll take you to the, like, whatever agenda item that is. It's, it's in the software that we
Also has a separate.
Yeah, we don't use, we don't necessarily use that part. So again, here's, you know, the peak of the discussion related to the apartment complex development, and then tapers up and down from there. So Inside Hermiston, we started this in May, we've done six newsletters. Initially, our audience was a hundred and thirty, and those were mostly city committee people and you and some city staff. Now we're up to three hundred and seventy-two as of October seventh. We have a sixty-three point two percent open rate, which, according to Daniel, the average for government-type communications like this is about thirty-eight or thirty-nine, so we're above average. And then click to open, so that's clicking on something once you've opened it. We're about sixteen percent, the average is about four. So, doing pretty well on that standpoint. I didn't put it up here, but most of these views on the newsletter are on computers and not on phones, which I thought was interesting, but. Next tool, Ask Hermiston, so this is a, just a screenshot of the, of the website. Right there, where the green arrow is, is our Ask Hermiston button, and that kind of floats on top of our website.
Yeah, it gets in the way sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. And it's a third-party tool that does two things. One, it provides a way to ask questions that then is answered by an AI that just uses our website content for its database. And then it also allows us to message using videos and create videos, it's, it's really a pretty functional tool. There's a couple of, you know, the stars of Ask Hermiston right there. So users for this. This is both, this is kind of a combination of the videos and the just general use, but we've had six hundred and twelve people use it. That's about, and then that's created eighteen hundred engagements. So that's if they've gone in, they've clicked something, so basically that's three times. Basically, when people are going, that their average of three ti, they're using three different things inside, so they're asking a question, they're clicking on a video, something like that. The queries that we've gotten are kind of in these, these are the three major areas, about public works, about the administrative side of the city, and about HR, so jobs and things like that. And this is an example answer that you might get if you were asking, is, is the city, is this construction affecting water, it gives an answer. And then it will pull up videos that are related. Now, the ones that it suggested, I'm not sure how, I mean, maybe Mark mentioned water in those videos or something like that, so it pulled it up. I don't know how closely those were tied to the specific question. Then on the, on the videos, one of the statistics our provider talked about is seventy-two percent of the people who start a video on this, finish it. Usually, the average is eight to fifteen percent, so people are watching the whole video, which is a positive from our standpoint. And so the average time they're watching is about a minute and fifteen seconds. Now, we've done city chats, five different city chats so far, about total, that's hit about fifty non-city people, so that's not counting staff or city counselors who are there. They've brought up and we've talked about a broad range of topics, and though the numbers aren't super high, I feel like the people who have attended have really appreciated that opportunity, and so from that standpoint, it's been positive. And we have, you know, three more scheduled for this fiscal year. So we've, for the last few years, we've been doing various types and lengths of surveys. Some have been kind of short, and we have one out there right now, which is related to the Carnegie Building, trying to get people to give us feedback, what would they like to see there. And that one, we've in particular worked really hard to have a hard copy and a, a copy on the, on the website. And then we have a tool of an ongoing community survey that, that we get results from every six months. And I'm gonna show the answers just to a few questions, we're gonna bring it back, the full survey, because I think there's some really interesting things that we need to spend more time on, and, and I wanted to just hit more kind of our communications efforts in general, so. So this is a showing of the different responses that we've had, we started in twenty twenty-two. And I've labeled those half-one and half-two, so kind of Janu, we get a results in January, we get a results in July type of thing. And it's kind of been up and down, it's a little interesting, the pattern that we're seeing, but it's kind of, I would say we're averaging in the five-hundred-ish responses. So one of the questions we ask is, how is the overall quality of life in, in Hermiston? And short of those two where it bumps into the fifty percent, about forty percent is saying it's good, positive quality of life. So we're staying pretty steady on that, and one of the, the values of this tool is this kind of being able to see over time. Are we having an impact on any of these questions? The last one, because it's kind of relevant to the discussion tonight, is our ability to give, how do you feel about the ability to give input to the Hermiston government? Over time, we've gone from twenty-six or even down to twenty-one, up to into the thirties. With that, thirty-five. I need to go see my eye doctor again. So, you know, that, that's a good sign to me, that maybe some of these efforts that we've just talked about have kind of helped a little bit, or, or other things we've been doing, it's a little hard to completely tie it, but I think that we're making an effort is kind of registering with, with those that are responding to the survey. So that's kind of a high-level overview of some of our efforts. Be happy to ask, answer any questions, or talk about any of those particular tools. The one thing that is coming, that, that we haven't implemented yet is an app that's going to tie everything together from a city standpoint, and it'll give people the opportunity to report. You know, they can take a picture of a, of a graffiti incident, or a pothole, and that'll give us coordinates, things like that when it comes in, it'll also give us a tracking system on the backend, so we make sure we follow up and let people know what happened with those requests. And then it'll have a link to, if you want to pay your water bill, you can go directly from the app. We're trying to create that opportunity to have a more of a one-stop-shop type of a place for, for interactions with the city. So that one, we have an implementation. So next month is when we hope to implement that. We're going through some, staff's gonna start going through training this month, so. Any questions or comments?
Questions? Counsel Lytton.
I like that idea of the app, will you also be able to advertise on it, like, for instance, the city chats that are coming up?
Yeah, we'll be able to put our events, yes, parks and rec events, city, you know, chats, whatever.
Counsel Brown?
Yes. I was looking, since we heard regarding EOTech, I was trying to look at the website as you were also talking. How do you base what questions you're gonna ask when you do the community survey?
So the, the ones that I showed you are a set group of questions. And so we can track over time how we're doing on those questions. Every six months, we have the opportunity to ask like a two or three questions on a specific subject. And so the one we did in the last six months was related to the broadband project, so asking about internet access and speeds and things like that. So we just kind of rotate that around as to kind of what issue might be coming up that we're, that staff's looking at at that point.
I wondered if perhaps, like, a video or something could be done regarding EOTech as well, like, asking people what kinds of and I don't know whether, yes, events, but at the same time, when you ask, does that mean then that, like, who's gonna pursue an event, you know, bringing it home? But I was just thinking about that.
Counsel Hayward?
On the app, that's great that we're, what we're doing and stuff, I noticed when we put the AI on there, I was actually surprised and started playing with it. On the app, is there a way that you guys have been doing testing with it? And maybe is there a way we can get on it as counselors to start seeing what it looks like? So when people bring it to us, I know I have a lot of tech people that come to me, ask me how to use it. And the sooner I get it, the sooner I can help them with it, but I think it would be.
See how to roll out, how the, how our, the company we're working with, how they roll it out, but we can definitely work at that.
Have us beta testing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but actually, you know, if you have people that don't know what they're doing, mess with it, if that's the people to break it. Okay, other questions, Counsel Kelso?
Yeah, thank you. I wonder, have we been given any indication on how quickly the turnaround on feedback can be? Suddenly, within the last forty-five minutes or so, keenly interested in the public opinion on prioritizing municipal court spending in the city.
Under our current, the current group we're working with, it wouldn't be super quick. That, we can do some short-term surveys, shorter-form surveys that are just a few questions on a little bit shorter notice, but getting it into that main survey would be, it wouldn't be timely from this standpoint, but.
Okay, thank you.
Can look at whether we can use it for one of these other shorter ones.
Other questions? Public comment, either of you two got anything to say? Wow. Okay, so that's a no. Alright, council comments, moving along quickly, yes, sir?
I just want to say thank you again on the city's efforts for transparency and communication. I've, I've always said that we probably have the easiest way of accessing information, like we were talking about the timestamps on the minutes. It's very easy to not have to scan through a YouTube video to try and find the point in the meeting that you wanted to watch. But if you knew the council was talking about X subject, you can go to the website, click the link, and it takes you directly to when that conversation starts. And I think that's one of the easiest ways that somebody might want to be able to access the full discussion on a council topic, especially when we're talking about getting information out there and misinformation, which often plagues our, our social medias in Hermiston, so I just want to congratulate the city on that, and keep it up.
Counsel Hayward?
I do have to applaud the city for what they did, I think that was something I brought to your attention, Byron. Is, we need to try to do whatever we can to get to the younger generations to communicate, because they're on their phones, and it seems like you've stepped up and answered that. So I applaud you guys all for that, thank you.
Counsel Kelso?
I just want to echo the sentiments that have already been said, but I want to really thank city staff for the efforts they put into transparency and, and opening up the city's business within the last year or two. Providing these opportunities to meet with the public, I think, has been invaluable, and I really appreciate your efforts in that regard, thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, yeah, I, I too think that's great, I, I have to say that giving beta testing is not a bad idea, but, you know, anybody can screw it up, it'd be somebody like me. Okay, no, this is an information only, so no action is being recommended. With that, we'll move on to committee reports, anybody have any committee reports? Counsel Roberts?
Attended the airport advisory meeting on October first. We had a quorum, which is good. There is interest in a, community interest in starting a flying club that's based out of the airport. Community members trying to put that together, so it'll be fun to see if that can, you know, take flight.
Can we censure him for that?
Yeah.
Oh, man, okay.
Financial report, still pretty early in the fiscal year, so, you know, nothing really out of the ordinary, not much to report there at this point. However, the new land that we purchased for the airport runway expansion is currently up for lease, so if you know any farmers that might be looking for some land, spread the word, because we would like to get that rented out. And then finally, finally, the hangar update, the electrician was due to arrive on October sixth, I haven't heard if that happened. But best-case scenario, about mid-November is when they're looking to finish, they already have seven people on the waiting list and are looking, that there's not gonna be really any problem filling those hangars, so. Just all exciting up there, we're gonna get more patrons, more fuel sales, increased revenue for the airport, and that's just an overall good thing.
Excellent. Any other committee reports, Counsel Hayward?
Yeah, I attended the faith advisory board last week, Stepping Stone was there, they reported to us that they were able to get solar panels that were installed, that were provided by, that was paid by Amazon, AWS, to help with the energy costs, they got that put on their general public roof, so they've been starting to see some of that come in. Then on top of it, they've been starting to see more people come in. Um, then on top of it, they've been starting to see more people come in overnight on the recurring side for about twenty-six patients, or guests, sorry, but their max capacity is forty. Um, they're seeing all the huts being filled at capacity as right now. And everything, that's about it.
Okay. Council Kelso?
Thank you. On, uh, Sa- Saturday, October fourth, I was, uh, able to attend the Hispanic Advisory Committee's Hispanic Heritage Month event, and I had a great time. It was a fantastic event. I'm super proud of that committee. Um, I want to say kudos to every member of that committee. They put in a lot of time and a lot of effort to planning that event, and it was pulled off excellently, I think. It was, uh, a good time with a lot of community resources available for people to check in with to see, uh, where the community, uh, agencies might be able to serve them. And, uh, in addition, there was some awesome dancing, uh, some awesome music, and some awesome food, and I had a great time, and I just, again, wanted to give kudos to each member of that committee for their effort in planning and, and, uh, hosting that event. I think it was a boon to our community.
Excellent. Pretty exciting stuff. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you to council for sending out pictures on that.
When it comes to your turn, you can do that.
Not intended.
Okay, uh, Mayor's Report, my turn. Um, so, in the last three weeks, uh, I've attended the LOC event with, uh, Council Drone, Council Linton, and City Manager Smith. Lot of, a lot of, uh, good information received there. We soaked it in like sponges. Um, our, uh, our, uh, youth advisory group be absent tonight. We have an excused absence on that, Lily.
In their chair.
Okay, well, we'll have to give them detention for that. Um, so, but a lot of good information. Very, very good conversations all the way around. We had, even had the, uh, President of the NLC, National League of Cities, there as well to give a speech. Couple of keynote speakers that were just basically blew everybody out of the water with all the information that they provided, so I was, I was totally, totally in awe at, at one of them. Um, I also want to say that new sign looks absolutely outstanding up there by the airport. It's beautiful. If you haven't seen it at night, it's, you know, it's in the daytime, it looks good. At night, it looks even better. So, well done on that, sir. Um, just a reminder to everybody, it's Breast of Cancer Awareness Month. Um, so, you know, keep, keep those folks that are dealing with that and, yeah, in your, in your thoughts. Uh, let's see, my list here. Uh, we had Hermiston Homecoming just recently, the community yard sale. I don't see Mr., tell us about that. Well, also, my, as attended by one of, a couple of my grandkids, the monster truck deals at, uh, at EOTech, uh, which also, at the same time, hosted Alpaca Fest.
Wow.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's an event I don't, didn't think I'd ever be talking about it, as city council said, but.
Well, weekend events, by the way.
Both weekend, a full weekend events, yes, fourth and the fifth. Um, also, this, this last week, we had the, uh, grand reopening of the Hermiston Public Library. It is amazing over there. If you have not gotten over there, why not? Okay, no, um, yeah, it's, it's a, I re-upped my library card and everything, so. Uh, it's a fantastic event, had a lot of fun. The kids there, they, I mean, when we opened the doors, it was just a mass of people going in, and it was so cool to see everybody enjoying it and seeing what they, all the work that they put into that, seeing that come to fruition. They had real steps instead of the, the wooden ones that I saw, but just the week before, so, looks really nice. Um, wow. That's, that's just the, the best word that I could come up with is wow. Also, uh, the, the, uh, had the Grooving for a Cause fundraiser for the local vets and families. Um, also, attended the Stepping Stones Alliance Gala here just last Saturday. That was, that was a lot of fun. A nice, nice, nice deal, good food, good conversations with people. Um, nice to see a lot of those folks. Um, I, next year, uh, they, they made, they made a few bucks here and there, uh, sold off a lot of swag, so to speak. Uh, let's see, we, uh, had, uh, talked about the Portland Opera being here. Uh, next, this, coming up this week, Human Bean Annual Coffee for a Cure fundraiser, Treats on Main coming up. Halloween spooky time of the year. Watch out for those little ghosts and goblins as they're coming up. Um, as for that, I think that's, covers.
I got a couple of these.
Did you get a couple I didn't? Well, I'm, then, then let's let you talk about them, sir. Your turn.
Um, well, I just want to say that I think the curse is lifted of when I go to, um, law enforcement agency adjacent, um, visits, um, stuff doesn't happen. Um, and I got to earlier this week, go to, uh, sit in at dispatch center and listen to some calls. Um, and actually, some pretty exciting things happened there, which I can't really talk about. They just said I would get in trouble for that, but, um, but I know it. Um, and so, uh, I was excited to go see that, and, um, it's a lot, um, more high-tech than I would have actually anticipated. Um, I don't know really what I anticipated, but I hadn't seen it before. Uh, so, great job, everyone there, and I was, uh, felt very welcome. I do want to remind everyone also that, um, we still have, um, uh, elections, um, uh, Declaration of Candidacy is open for the ward counselors and municipal judge. You've got a deadline of March tenth to do that. Um, something that might cost me the election is my, um, opinion that the, um, it's movie, It's a Wonderful Life, is not a Christmas movie. Uh, but it is a good one, um, and Hermiston High School is actually doing a live play version of that this week, uh, the seventeenth and the eighteenth, and again on the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth at Hermiston High School. Uh, tickets are five dollars. Um, I believe there's a, there's seven PM on Fridays, and then two PM, and again at seven PM on Saturdays, those two weekends. Um, also, this week, the Chamber of Commerce got the Service Organization Fair happening, um, inside the community center at twelve o'clock. Uh, so be assured to, uh, go, go browse through that. It's really good for just about everybody in the community. I've been able and fortunate enough to participate in that the past couple of years, so I encourage you to do that this week as well. That's what I've got.
I forgot to mention that the LOC listening session coming up, uh, this next week, this week.
This week.
Wednesday. I think I sent that out to all you guys. Okay, uh, council president report done. Council reports, any counselors want, okay.
The reopening of the library was very exciting. It was really thrilling to see how many people actually turned out for that. It was a lot.
Yes. A lot of the kids that showed up here for the, uh, that was another thing that I'd forgotten, was the, the homeschool kids tour. And I had participated in that, and a lot of those kids were, were there that day as well, so.
Well, I noticed it's story hour down there. It was full.
Act.
Yeah. So, that was a good time.
Excellent. Other council reports. Council Linton?
Oh, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, with the LOC meeting, I think this was the best one I've been to. Lot of good information there, and it was so much that I can't, didn't have a chance to talk to any of the vendors to find out what they were doing, because I was always going to something, and, um, I did bring back a brochure of, uh, a tour that I went on and looked at their information with, uh, it says, "Welcome to Lorax Lake Oswego Recreation and Aquatic Center." It was very nice, and also, I also wanted to bring up about the, uh, uh, I usually do when there, there's a vote coming up, Ward one, Ward two, Ward three, Ward four are open right now. I'm hoping people will run for those positions. Uh, I think you should have a, I've always said this, so I'm repeating myself again. More than one person running. You should have two, three, four, five, many as possible. And, um, as I'm pretty sure some of the people that think that, uh, they can do a better job, run, please, please run. Um, in two years from now, there'll be four positions again. Please run. You know, you want to come in and see what it's all about and help out with the city that you love so much, please, um, run for the positions. Thank you.
Council Roberts?
To piggyback off that, um, I'm glad to hear that there were people here talking about EOTech from the, the hotel, uh, you know, hotels from around town. Um, I, I really, you know, liked what they had to say and, and took that to heart. Um, it reminded me that we have a position open on the EOTech, uh, committee right now. Uh, we currently have, uh, positions open on the Budget Committee, Faith Advisory Committee, Rec, Parks and Rec Committee, um, and the Airport Advisory Committee. So, in addition to having the ability to run for office right now, being open, I also would like to encourage people to, if, if you just don't want to get up on the dais, there's still other ways to get involved in your city, so go to the website and, uh, check out what, uh, openings we have on committees and continue serving in that capacity.
Council Drone?
I just want to give, uh, the city administrators the big thank you for allowing me to go and be part of the LOC conference, um, as Ms. Linton said. It was an awesome conference. Um, I took a class on leadership, um, because I think we can, I can always improve. Um, one of the quotes that I wrote down is, "Every contact is an ambassadorship for the city or department." And so, um, I think, um, that is very heavy, uh, for us to consider on everything that we do. And the other thing that, um, someone else said is that we constantly need to be thinking not, not just of the present, but, um, in future generations. And that is why I am so, I was so excited to be part of the, um, or to go, uh, to the grand opening, reopening of the library. It was nice to see, uh, a lot of little kids going with their families. It reminded me of, um, my own children when, um, as a single parent, would take them there after school during the summer so that they would get interested in reading. And, um, I, you know, it was, it was exciting to see the kids get excited, but it was also nice to see, um, the staff. They were so excited. They were very grateful. And, um, I think for a lot of the community partners that have been involved, there's so many, um, um, things, they've had the pulse of the community. I can't think of her name right now, but it, she was recognized, um, at the last meeting for being the longstanding member of the planning.
Margaret Saylor.
Margaret Saylor was there. Uh, Commissioner Murdock was there. Uh, Mr. Pusey was there. And so, um, you know, Commissioner Murdock was one of the individuals that was a huge asset into, um, bringing this to Hermiston, uh, you know, seeing the growth and having the vision. Um, and I'm grateful that his wife is the librarian, because I think, as he said, um, she was a big influence on, on, you know, on his decision. So, I am very grateful because I know that for some people, they may see, uh, the library as a Taj Mahal, but I see it as an investment in our youth. I see it as an investment in our community. And I see it as a place where children like mine, uh, probably didn't have an adult to go to, but were interested in reading or were interested in doing summer programs. Um, and that's where my kids felt safe, and that's where, as a parent, I felt like it was a safe place for them to go. So, I really appreciate the work that, um, Mr. Rose did, as well as, uh, the staff for not only, uh, putting away the books, but also trying to make things work while they were in their temporary location. And now, I think, you know, uh, the community has something, another thing to be proud of, so thank you for those that, uh, participated in providing feedback on the artwork, on every single aspect of that, uh, remodel work, as well as the architects that also, um, brought their ideas to the table. Everyone that was involved, I think, we're very grateful for all of their input.
Council Drone?
Thank you. Um, one of the things that, between last session and this session is I had the honor of attending, uh, Captain Enin's retirement, uh, ceremony, so that was, uh, uh, a really cool thing to be there, um, celebrate, uh, his accomplishments and what he's done for law enforcement. Uh, so, I was very honored to be there. Uh, it was, uh, great to see what he did in his entire career, and, I mean, he's got, uh, see, see what he's gonna do in his next chapter, so that was, that was really cool. Um, I also wanted to bring something, uh, forward to the council. Um, I had a discussion with City Manager Smith, I mean, maybe how to go about this, and so I think the best arena to, to go about this would be to bring it up in my council comments, and that is, uh, the dedication of the basketball courts, where it was then known as the East Side, uh, but dedication of the courts to, uh, Mr. Joe Thompson. Uh, and so, I wanted to see if, uh, the council had an appetite in renaming, uh, the courts in his honor. Uh, it's almost been a year or two, it's almost been a year since he's passed, and, uh, he was the owner of East Side Market. Did a lot for this community, and so, I wanted to see, uh, if the council would be interested in having a discussion about renaming it in his name.
Let's see. Can I get a motion to, uh, bring that to the next council meeting or attach, a future council meeting?
Motion to bring what Roy just said.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Council Hayward, seconded by Council Kelso. Roll call.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. This is one of those where I wish I could vote yes, too. Thank you, council. Okay. Uh, well, get it, get it, nope, gotta let everybody else have their chance first.
Oh, okay.
Council Kelso?
Thank you, and thanks, Council Linton. Um, I would like to, uh, second what you said, Mr. Mayor, about the Stepping Stones Gala on Saturday. I had a great time, and it was an excellent cause. Um, I want to congratulate the staff, and especially the Director, Jesslyn Cole, for the work that they do and the, the awesome event that they put on. I had a chance to speak to a couple of the board members, um, of Stepping Stones, and the one thing that they have in common is a passion to serve a very underserved and very hard-to-serve, sometimes, community, and, um, so, my heart goes out to them, and I really thank them for the work that they do. I don't think that everybody's cut out for it, but they certainly are, so I wanted to thank them for that. Uh, I wanted to congratulate the city staff on, uh, the library. What an amazing event that was, and what an awesome building we have. And to get that construction project done on time and on budget is quite an event, or quite a feat, so please, I congratulate you, and, uh, thank you very much for getting that done. And, um, I just wanted to, uh, advertise a fundraiser coming up for a, a charity that I care a lot about. True Care is having a fall dessert fundraiser on Tuesday, the twenty-first, at six PM at the community center. So, you don't need to RSVP, you can just show up, and the guest speaker will be State Representative Greg Smith. So, come, have a dessert, and listen to what the, uh, state rep has to say. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, Council Hayward, do you have anything?
All I have is, wow, the library. My daughters were in love with that. Um, I know I'm gonna be there more. My wife will probably, but thank you for the staff. That looks amazing.
All right, back at you, Alan Smith.
Oh, I forgot to mention, uh, the Dallas, but for, uh, Stepping Stones. Um, I volunteer, um, at Stepping Stones, and I was really excited about going again. This is the second, their second annual. They'll be doing it every year, and I, hopefully, I'll be able to go in future years, uh, like, uh, Councilor Kelso said, uh, it's, uh, they're doing a wonderful job. And congratulations on how, the, last year, I think they raised thirty-five thousand. I hope it was more this year. Um, second thing is that I would like to bring up is thirty thousand asking that the city council will, uh, discuss, put on the agenda, giving thirty thousand dollars to Hark and Ryder. The fastest-growing, uh, homeless section in this country are seniors. And I go over there to Hark and Ryder. I try to go at least once a month. Uh, sometimes I don't make it, but, um, you know, they have people that can't even afford the five dollars. And I would, I would love to see it to where they have, can have lunch there five days a week, and it was free. But at least thirty thousand to help out with food where they, um, I'll give you an example of, uh, without saying names or gender, of an individual, bring a container, eat some of their lunch, and then they'll pack some away so they can have a dinner, and I- And I believe that our seniors are important, and that we, not just because I'm a senior, but we are important. Thank you.
Do we need a?
We need a motion?
We would need a motion to bring that up forward.
Okay. I make a motion to add to the agenda of giving Harken Rider thirty thousand dollars to go towards food.
Can I hear a second?
Is that the appropriate motion to make? Does what we need to direct? Well, I think she said to put on a future.
Agenda.
Okay, it's been motioned by Counsel Linton, seconded by Counsel Meyer. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. All right, motion carries.
All right, City Manager report. So, just so all of you who went to the library, there's something new to see. So, the public art that we had purchased to go in on the inside was not installed on Friday, but it got installed today. So, go back and take a look at that. And if you haven't gone at all, go look at it all together. The other thing I wanted to just point out, in honor, in honor of Mr. Brookshire, the city's gonna put a bench here at City Hall somewhere around the building with his name and honoring him. We want, I just wanna let you know that we would, we'd be doing that. And then, the charter, nobody's mentioned the Charter Review meeting coming up this week.
That's right. Charter review is on.
Wednesday. Yep.
Five.
Five-thirty for the meeting, five.
Right.
The committee will have some food.
You forgot something. Okay.
That's all.
That it?
Yep.
Anybody else have anything? All right, we're adjourned.